Sorry for the delay. I was hoping to catch Peter and I didn't yet, but if you -- welcome to the March 14th council meeting. If you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, just a -- I have just a couple of announcements. The Merrimack Village District's annual meeting will take place at the James Mastrecola Upper Elementary School in the All Purpose Room on Tuesday, March 26th at 7:00 PM. The official ballot vote, our voting day, will be held on Tuesday, April 9th from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM. There are three polling places, James Mastrecola Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and St. John Newman. If you're not sure where you're supposed to vote, you might contact the town clerk's office at 424-3651, or you could also visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State's website to find your specific polling place. Our upcoming meetings, Thursday, March 28th, Thursday, April 11th, and Thursday, April 25th, are regular council meetings here in the Matthew Thornton Room, all three at 7:00 PM. Eileen?
On Saturday, March 30th, between 9:00 and 12:30, the library will be hosting the annual free computer clinic with the Michael Lovren Memorial Foundation. Call the library to make an appointment with volunteer computer experts who can help you with any technology questions that you may have. Dog licenses are due by April 30th. To license the town clerk's office will need a current rabies information and neuter spay certificate if applicable. The town clerk's office will be open on Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 to noon for dog licensing. The New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services will be hosting a PFAS, PFAS, community fair, health fair. On Wednesday, April 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM in the Merrimack High School cafeteria. The purpose of the fair is to respond to the community's concerns by providing an opportunity to meet with state agencies, local providers, PFAS experts, legislature, legislators, and advocacy groups. This is an informal event where people are encouraged to walk around and ask questions of the various participating groups. Finley, may I say, may I speak to Bill? Did you want to add anything, Bill? Because I know you've been involved in the setting this up and...
I appreciate that, thank you. And Representative Murphy has also been instrumental in participating.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you.
It's on. It's on. Has been instrumental with some of the meetings. Lights are going to be gone, but these are going to be crossed, but it's going to be packed with a variety of different positions, different groups that are available for people that have questions regarding the health concerns as it relates. Really, really excited about this opportunity coming to Merrimack and being made available to people that live in Southern New Hampshire and have questions or concerns about their health. I certainly want to thank Lisa Morris, who is the director for public health, director for public health at the Department of Health and Human Services. She and her team have been absolutely phenomenal in having the understanding of how Merrimack has been impacted and being able to provide different, like I said, different groups, different positions come and be available to meet with people and address any concerns. I'm really excited about it. I think it's a great opportunity. It's great for Merrimack. I certainly want to thank Lisa Morris and her team at the Department of Health and Human Services, and I want to thank them. And I'm very happy to be there and look forward. Hopefully, hopefully it'll be a packed event. I hope to see our two council nurses.
Perfect. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
You all set, Eileen?
Sure.
All right. Comments from the press and public if you'd like to address the council? Feel free to step to the table or the mic over here. No one. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements this evening. First item of business is appointments. We will have our annual review with the Highway Safety Committee. Chief is here to make a presentation. Per Town of Merrimack Charter, Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be a review with the Highway Safety Committee. The agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or act upon. Hi, Chief.
Thank you for inviting me. You keep inviting me here and I really appreciate it. Yes, I am very happy to be nominated. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Eileen, Paul, thank you very much for having us update you on what's been going on with the Highway Safety Committee. In the last year, we've, as you would know, Finley, it's, it's been slower, which I actually consider a blessing because it means we don't have too, too many problems. We've had some different requests that have come through for stop signs in neighborhoods that just weren't feasible, but we really evaluate it. And thanks to Kyle and Dawn, we've been able to make sure that we follow all the DOT regulations. And so, you know, those are just kind of the everyday things that we, we have. Some of the biggest updates, last year at this time, you probably remember, we were starting to talk about the bus company coming into Daniel Webster Highway at the, at the old Summit Building. I guess it's not the old, it's still the Summit Building. We thankfully, knock on whatever material this is, we, from the very beginning of the school year, from day one, we've been monitoring to see how that goes, obviously for the neighbors, for the traffic flow, and it has not been an issue. There's been no issues as far as backups because of the buses. There's certainly backups, but it's not because of the buses. Excuse me, I was choking on water before. So, that, we're going to continue to keep an eye on it, but we're, we're very glad that that's all worked out and it seems to be a good location for that. So, minus the stop signs, had a few speeding complaints. Our new equipment as far as the speed signs that say your, that indicate what your speed are and also capture, along with our Speed Spy, capture what the speeds are and they calculate and they average it, time of day, everything. That's worked out phenomenally. Almost said something else, phenomenally. And we have been able to really put the neighbors' minds at ease that although it seems like there's a problem with the speeders, generally it's not. There are, of course, those few, you know, people who do exceed the speed limit, but everything seems to be under control. And it has slowed people down, being able to see what your speed are. And the ability for us to be able to move it from location to location instead of that giant trailer has been much more beneficial for us. So, that's also something that we've been talking about. The other, the biggest item, I think, really that over the last year that we've been dealing with is the neighbors from the Hilton Drive area. And for those of you not familiar with Hilton Drive, it's up in the north end of town. It's just south of the Homestead Restaurant. And as we all know, the traffic lately has increased tremendously in that area, both north and south. And it's very difficult for the neighbors to get in and out of that neighborhood with the amount of traffic at certain times of the day, usually around between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So, we've had many meetings on this. We've brought the state in. We have brought NRPC in. And it's, we're extremely limited to what we can do. It's the state road. That portion of it is not the Town of Merrimack's road. But the, NRPC has agreed to do a traffic study and see the amount, what kind of cars are going, you know, back and forth throughout a time period. So, we're hoping that that is going to help. I don't, it's obviously not going to alleviate any problems, but there's really, because of the design of the road, there's not, it'd be impossible to put a center lane in there. It's just not wide enough without taking property. So, we're really just trying to look at, you know, some, what some of our options are. So, that's continuing, but it's been a big discussion for at least the last few meetings. But I think we are moving forward with trying to do something for the residents there. Again, our hands are kind of tied, so it's pretty difficult. Other than that, there hasn't really been too many problems in town. So, the next year, I think, you know, we're looking, again, people have the speeding in the, in the neighborhoods, and I think that we've got a better handle on that with some of the equipment now that we've been able to get. And again, you know, Dawn is amazing. She can come up with anything as far as DOT related, or we all, I don't know. So, she, she knows exactly what we need. And one of the, I think we're going to talk about it a little bit later, one of the current things is Island Drive and the amount of traffic. You know, Greeley Street is, oh, I think it's been an every-year discussion about the intersection, the Greeley Street and Amherst Road and Camp Sergeant. We've really, we've reached out to Fidelity. We've done traffic enforcement there to try to educate people on not blocking that intersection, but because of the pattern of those lights, it's very difficult to control. But I think that we're doing a better job of getting out there and being visible. And it's funny how when there's a police car there, they still, they won't do it. They'll still do it, but they won't do it as much. So, when we can, we do get out there and try to add more directed patrols to the area. So, I know it's short and sweet and I'm, I'm sorry. You, I know you want me to keep talking. Yeah.
No. Thanks, Chief. Barbara?
Chief, when are they planning to do the traffic study at Hinsel Drive there?
In the spring.
In the spring.
We're almost there. We're not quite at the spring yet.
So, we can let everybody know that there's a traffic study going on.
Yes. Oh, no, we will. We will absolutely let, we'll probably put it maybe in, in one of the town manager's announcements just so that people, if they do see people out there.
Yeah, they'll know what's going on.
That they'll know what's going on, but, so...
Yep. It is an awkward intersection, for sure. On a good day. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Roy, thank you. Couple of observations. I've noticed an uptick of patrols along Continental and Industrial Drive, and I noticed that you are getting people driving above the limit. So, I want to congratulate you and everybody else on the Police Department for, for doing that, because it seems to me that there's a proclivity to treat those particular roadways as Talladega as opposed to a 35 mile per hour roadway. So, I, the enforcement, I really have noticed an uptick over the last couple of months, so I just wanted to thank you for that. Last year, it's kind of a, little bit of a sore spot for Finley and I, but the, the blind spot at the exit, at the Effie Everett Turnpike. Has there been any discussion with the state about looking for calming opportunities to make that yield a little bit more easier to get through?
Which intersection, which?
So, when you, when you're going northbound, you take the exit to get, get off of Merrimack, and then you get the southbound, it all merges in and it's a blind spot.
Exit 13.
Exit 13.
Oh, okay.
It's a blind spot.
I was like, trying to figure, I was like, yes, you know, and actually, that's a good point. I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses, so I'm trying to, trying to see what I actually wrote.
I forgot mine. Do you want to bring Castle Healy's?
But that is actually one of, of one of the things we had talked about early in the year. We had talked about exit 13 and coming, we actually had somebody from the governor's office come down and do a, a ride-through with us where we drove and, so that they could see exactly what we were talking about. A couple issues. Number one, it's not our town and it's estate property. It's in, it's actually located in Bedford. And the other issue, well, you know, we were concerned because there's a lot of Merrimack residents who use that, so we were just concerned with the merging there. And they feel as though there is enough, there's enough sight there, there's enough signage to say that, that that's coming and the impeding traffic is merging, that they are not going to do anything with that.
Okay. Okay. Not...
But I do agree with you. It is a very difficult...
Not thrilled with it, but okay.
So, they, we did try to take action, but unfortunately, again, as, as you know, it's not up to us, so our hands are tied on that.
Are there, the last question is, have you noticed, just, it's more of a, more of a curiosity kind of question regarding speed enforcement town. Have you noticed any uptick in any specific areas of town that, regarding speed, that we haven't seen before in the past and?
One of the areas that had come up during the year was the Camp Sergeant Road area, and people were afraid that the traffic was because of the mall. But we, again, were able to put our Speed Spy up on Camp Sergeant Road and discovered that there were some cars that were, the speed was, had increased. However, it was not when the mall was open. So, it was early in the morning. So, other, other than that, it's really, it's hard to speed on Daniel Webster Highway these days because there's so much traffic. I certainly at certain times of the day. But other than that, the motoring public, I think we've done such a good job at educating, because that's what our goal is, to educate. And it's not just to give tickets. I know everyone thinks that it is, but it's not. It's to educate the public to what can happen. So, I think that we've been able to successfully, you know, show people that you need to slow down because certain things can happen.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I learned, I, everybody that lives in the Camp Sergeant Road area talks about the heavier traffic now that the outlets are there. And it didn't make sense to me why people would travel down that road. It wasn't going to save them any time, but what causes it is your GPS. It took me there and I'm going, no wonder there's a problem here. And I, that I don't think you can change in any fashion. I think we're stuck with that.
And a couple of people did do that, and it did come up that, if they, to get off exit 11, that's how you would go to the mall, which doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
Yep, sends you down Camp Sergeant Road. No, it doesn't. But that's, that, I finally realized why people would do that and not because it did save them time.
Right. The only other thing I would also add, we talk about increase in traffic. There are so many buildings being put up throughout the areas of town. I would anticipate that the traffic will increase. But we'll, again, we'll keep an eye on it and make sure that, and any issues that come up, people are very good, the town, the people in town are very good about letting us know and coming to our meetings and discussing issues that they have. And I would encourage anyone who has any traffic-related or signage concerns to come to one of our meetings. They're usually posted, so...
Very good. Just one quick question. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Chief, if, 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 if this community is fortunate to lose the tolls at exit 11, is it foreseeable that there might be an uptick of traffic trying to bypass getting on to exit 10 and come down Camp Sergeant Road to gain access to exit 11 because the toll booths are going, no longer going to be there?
I'll use your word of if.
Yeah, if.
If that were to happen. I would anticipate that, that there would be an increase at that exit if they were only to eliminate one of them. You know, the outer staters, I can't imagine. I think it would be more local people who would try to take it.
Agreed.
But I do agree that there would be an increase in that area.
Okay.
Which is already heavily congested.
Okay. Thank you. You okay, Mr. Chairman?
I am, I think.
I just wanted to make a comment about the Camp Sergeant area. Actually, there is now a sign there, before you turn onto Camp Sergeant Road, that says, "Next set of lights, turn left for the mall." And that's helped. Because I used to have people literally pulling in my driveway looking, "Turn around." So, it's much better.
Excellent.
And I think that sign's helped. You do get them on occasion, but not as frequently as we used to.
Signs do, believe it or not, a lot of people do, there's a lot of people don't, but there's a lot of people do pay attention to signs. We just, we had some curve signs put up on, I believe it was Bedford Road, and just the fact that they're not enforceable, but to slow down that there's a curve coming up, they are helpful, so...
Yep. Excellent. Tom?
Chief, is there anything the Highway Committee can do to, to prepare or get ready for the DW, the Effie Everett Turnpike widening as far as the impact that will have on Merrimack?
Well, it's certainly something we should be involved in as far as, you know, the study of what's to come. As far as the Highway Safety Committee, I think that we just need to continue on with our, our meeting, monthly meetings, to make sure that we're staying on top and communicating with the Highway Department, communicating with the state, just to make sure that we're all, you know, we know when something is coming and we can put out, let announcements go out, put out to people. So, hopefully it'll avoid the area or what they expect once it's done.
What's that starting?
Couple of years it passed, so...
2021.
I could be in warm weather when it comes up.
We need to be thinking ahead. No, you're absolutely right. But I'm thinking to myself, maybe I have lost track of time, so not, not...
It's not for a while, but it is something that we have to stay on top of from the beginning, and you're absolutely correct.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for showing up.
All right. We actually, this evening, we had three public hearings. Actually, we're just going to, our first public hearing is consideration to changes to Chapter 183, Vehicles and Traffic of the Merrimack Town Code. This is a public hearing after the first reading two weeks ago. So, did you, did Dawn want to speak to anything?
Dawn's here and she's willing to answer questions. I think that, you know, as we all kind of discussed afterwards individually, that we kind of veered off topic onto another subject when we were just talking about a stop sign versus a yield sign. So, if the, you know, as we had pointed out to the residents, that Nancy had said that they should, if the residents want to do something about that intersection and DW Drive, that they should start with the Highway Safety Committee. So, this is about stop sign versus only, yes?
Hi, Dawn.
Hi.
I missed you two weeks ago. Oh, I was going to wait till the presentation, but I can, I will open the public hearing at 7:24.
Thank you. So, as we are here tonight to change the code 183-32 to remove a yield sign and to put a stop sign under code 183-31 at the location, which it's not up yet, but at Daniel Web... It isn't back. It isn't back, okay. Daniel Webster Drive and Daniel Webster Highway. This was brought to me by one of the residents in the area, and she was concerned about this particular intersection. So, we met and we've went through a number of her concerns. And if you, oops, I can't do this. Nope. Okay, I'll do that. So, I follow the MUTCD guide. This tells me what I need to do for all of the street signs. So, I've used this book, and I've given you a new copy, and this is not cooperating with me. Two fingers, there we go. Okay. Something new. It's a new computer. Oh, I don't, I don't use, anyway. So, when we come down to stop signs, under Section 2.5.06, "At intersections where a full stop is not necessary at all times, consideration should first be given to using less restrictive measures such as yield signs." Okay, that's part one. Part two, "The use of stop signs on minor street approaches should be considered if engineering judgment indicates that a stop is always required because of one of the following conditions. A, the vehicular traffic volumes on the through-street or the highway exceeds 6,000 cars a day." We're talking about 16,000 cars on DW Highway. Yes. B, the, it's, it's per day. It's, those are the numbers that we've been working with. B, "A restricted view exists that requires road users to stop in order to adequately observe conflicting traffic on the through-street or highway." Those are the two main ones, and the third one is crash records. And I did follow those. There are, on average, five a year in that area, not necessarily at that intersection. So, given all of that, and every other intersection onto Daniel Webster Highway is either a street light or a stop sign. This is the only one that's left that's still a yield. So, therefore, we are requesting to change the yield to a stop.
If you add something, you can do an hour and then take the public.
Well, Dawn, thank you for this. I hadn't seen it before. You didn't bring it up last time as far as the rules and stuff were concerned. And I'm a little, a little surprised because I've never had a problem at that intersection, whether there's 16,000 or 6,000 cars that go by every day. I don't go by during the rush hour time periods naturally. Unfortunately, I work, unfortunately, I work in Manchester. But I've always not had problems. And people that I know that live on Island Drive and whatnot have argued with me that they don't want to see extra signs there. They were, they were unhappy with initially putting the sign on Island Drive. And now, you keep referring to Island Drive, but this is really DW Drive, which is around the corner. And testimony was received last time that, that maybe a stop sign at Pond V Drive was a better place to put one, to try and avoid the concerns and the accidents that are happening there. And as was discussed last time, which had nothing to do with this particular request, but it kind of mushroomed into the whole thing, that whole intersection maybe should be redesigned and reviewed. And I guess the question that I'm wondering is, if this is just stepping out a little too far, too fast, we're not really getting the right solution in here by doing this stop sign. Is that, is that something you would consider, or is, or do you think a stop sign is that important? We should change the code and move forward with it at this point?
I do.
Okay. The lady that made the complaint when she was here last time wasn't even talking about the stop sign. She was talking about turning off DW Highway, and this will do absolutely nothing to alleviate that concern. Are we doing anything to address the concern that she has of moving southbound on DW Highway and trying to turn onto DW Drive?
Yes.
And does this stop sign impact that at all?
It helps in coming out the other direction. And like I said, she had many concerns and we boiled them all down. I can deal with the rest of them at this intersection, but I do need to have your permission to be able to change the stop to a yield.
Yield to a stop.
A yield to a stop, sorry.
Okay. I have a personal objection to putting signs up all over town, and I, I felt like this one was working fine. I guess, I'm not sure, I'm convinced that a stop sign is necessary. They're causing people to stop, turn over their shoulder to look and see before they can now go from, from a dead stop to, to moving again versus being able to get an idea of where they could merge in easier. It's going to require a longer sight distance and more distance before they can get into traffic from a dead stop, which, and you've got a lot of visibility going towards that yield sign. You should be able to get an idea of what the traffic's doing to yield in. It's just my opinion.
But, but it is, you're looking way back, no matter whether you're stopping or whether you're yielding. And I believe the stop, the stop sign will help in certain circumstances where people are trying to pass, if somebody's trying to make a left-hand turn. So, yes, I mean, I wouldn't be here if I didn't recommend doing this. And like I said, every other intersection onto Daniel Webster Highway is either a stop, sign, or a street light.
Okay. But I just, I disagree. I think that having to, you, you need a longer gap to move in if you're moving from a stop than if you can move from a rolling stop or, or a yield, if you will. And so, it concerns me that it will make the problem worse trying to get in, especially when there's heavy traffic considerations. You need a bigger gap. But that's, that's going to be the way it is, apparently.
Tom?
I, I actually agree with Dawn. And sorry, Chief, I'm going to say this, but when I used to come off and go fishing or something, you know, it's a yield sign, so I used to look at the traffic on DW Highway and go faster because it's only a yield sign to try to get out in front. So, I agree with you to make that a stop sign.
Keep an eye on them on the road.
Sorry, Chief.
I'll take the statue and the patients off.
Actually, I, the only time I travel to that road is every Friday because my little grandson does piano lessons in the condos. When it's a heavier traffic load, I don't even go out north. I go straight across to Route 3 and then turn right. It's an easier situation. I, I can appreciate what you're saying, Tom, because one of my pet peeves for probably 20 years now, when they changed it to a stop sign, is the fork, the Turkey Hill Road, Babu's Lake Road intersection. That frustrates me, having to come to a complete stop there, just because you have to start from zero and, you know, blend into traffic and so on. But nonetheless, it, I think what you see with this stop sign, it will have you stop, which is the plan, but then that whole intersection, because it is an awkward intersection, it's not probably designed anywhere near perfectly, you're going to be yielding anyhow. You're going to come to that stop bar, and then you're going to go, and you're going to merge in regardless in a yielding-type fashion. So, so, you know, a yield sign, you know, would work. I, you know, I appreciate the numbers that you spoke to because I, I actually thought we were at 20,000 cars a day, so I guess we're a little bit fewer than I had realized, but it's still a number. So, I appreciate that. But Nancy?
The only fact that really helped me make
The only fact that really helped me make up my mind is that whole idea of cutting through, because I've seen that more often, where you're getting, it's very slow, it's very backed up and you have cars taking off and then yielding. So I think that's gonna, is it gonna stop it? No.
I was gonna say, how many is it gonna stop?
No. But will it discourage it, even if it's three or four cars? Because right now, I think it's ridiculous, but that's what made me.
All right. Nothing further from the council. If anybody from the public would like to address this issue, you can step to the mic or the table. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:34. The pleasure of the council.
Madam, uh, Madam Chair, is it going?
Yes, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, move the item to the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain. It's, sorry, 510, Tom Cannon, voting in the negative. Thank you. Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is the council's to receive input on the group petition that was received pursuant to Charter Article 10 hyphen 1B. All right, I'm not sure what that is, but SB 191 and RSA 285:51, aye. The petition states shall the town vote to allow Keno Games to be operated as prescribed by state law within Merrimack. Mike Kelly, who was the petitioner with this, wasn't able to make it here this evening, but Maura, and she did tell me her last name and I had forgotten, is here from the state who would be able to make a little presentation and then we'll have the public, they would like to speak to it after that, can do it. I'm opening the public hearing at 7:35. Thanks, Maura. I'm sorry I forgot your last name.
Quite all right. Thank you. Maura McCann. I have worked at the New Hampshire Lottery for well over three decades. I have a wonderful job. I am the Director of Marketing for the Lottery. The New Hampshire Lottery actually just celebrated this past Tuesday our 55th birthday. The lottery here in New Hampshire was actually the first legal lottery in the United States, so it all started here. A state legislator by the name of Larry Pickett, I love saying his last name because of course we pick winning numbers, so it was very, very, you know, fortunate that his name was Pickett. But Larry Pickett from Keene actually proposed the lottery five times before he was successful in 1963. So in 1964, it's actually March 12, 1964, Governor John King purchased that first ticket at Rockingham Park. And we have that ticket at the lottery in our large conference room, so wonderful that that actually became available at an auction. Somebody purchased it and donated it to our office, so happy about that. Keno, oh, let me back up. I was here about maybe 13, 14 months ago trying to give away half a billion dollars to a Merrimack resident who bought a winning jackpot ticket for the game. So that was wonderful, great to have that. I'm actually the person who gets the call at night to say that we have a big winning ticket. And from that point on, you know, my life is about 100 miles an hour, so lovely to be able to do that, lovely to be able to have that resident remain anonymous here in Merrimack, and I wish that person well. But I'm here to talk about the game of Keno, answer any questions that either the Select Board has or the public. Keno has been on sale since December of 2017. Last year, the New Hampshire Lottery had a record-breaking sales year at more than $337 million, which resulted in more than $87 million earmarked to aid education here in New Hampshire. And if I could go back from 1964 to current, it's more than $2 billion that has been raised to support education. Specifically, Keno was brought on board and the law says that Keno, the net profit from the sale of Keno is to support full-day kindergarten. And I understand that here in Merrimack, you do have full-day kindergarten. Currently, the state provides approximately $1,800, this was before Keno, $1,800 per student for kindergarten. Once Keno came on board, they added an additional $1,100. So that's up to $2,900 to support each student in kindergarten here in Merrimack from the state of New Hampshire. So Keno started in December of 2017. When it launched pursuant to the law, each town and city has to approve the sale of the game. So back in December of 2017, only the cities were able to vote to approve the sale. So we had about six cities that said yes. We had about 40 locations and the game went on sale. So for about six months or so, from December of 2017 through the end of our fiscal year, we did just shy of $9 million in Keno sales or 1.5 million that was earmarked for education as a result of the net profit. We're now in a new fiscal year and we are at more than 17 million in Keno sales, at more than 160 locations across the state of New Hampshire, all the way from Colebrook right down through the western side of the state, through the Menadnock region, over to the seacoast where it's very popular and we come north right through Manchester and right up through the Lakes region. So 160 locations selling the game. Currently, the net profit is at about 3.3 million. And this past week, town meetings, 16 additional towns said yes to Keno. So that will open up more places that will be eligible to sell the game. When we get to an optimum amount of sales locations, the sales will be probably well over 40 million with approximately eight to nine million dollars in net profit to support kindergarten. Again, we're at 160 with the additional towns that said yes to Keno. We're looking at probably adding 50 more through the end of this fiscal year and there'll be probably even more beyond that. But we do have interest from just about 50 locations. Is there anything that I can answer? Yes.
So I just read today that it said that the Senate just passed something unanimously today to basically Keno's not, won't support full-day kindergarten. But it says the connection between Keno and kindergarten in New Hampshire could be coming to an end. Senate voted 24-0 in favor of SB 266-FN, which would finance full-day kindergarten grants entirely from educational funds and divert Keno revenues to school billing aid. So what does that mean? What is the school billing aid, so what would Keno fund?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to answer questions specific to that. The lottery is charged with raising the money to support whatever the legislature dictates. So currently, it is to fund full-day kindergarten. Each month, the net profit from the sale of lottery tickets goes over to the Educational Trust Fund through the State Treasurer's Office, so that deposit is made once a month.
I win.
What is Keno?
Keno. Yes, Keno is a game. It's similar to bingo and it is specifically allowed at establishments that have a liquor-pouring license. And there is a machine that you can purchase Keno tickets from. You have a selection of one to 80 numbers where you could bet anywhere from four, five, right up to 12 numbers for a particular drawing. And we select 20 winning numbers of the 80 numbers that are available. So based upon from your ticket, those numbers that match the winning numbers determine a prize won. Keno is actually on sale 24 hours a day if an establishment was open. Drawings are held from 11:05 a.m. until 1 a.m. and drawings occur every five minutes.
Okay. I see no questions here. I think we're all set, Maura. What we had to do is, last night, we had our deliberative session and this was moved to the ballot for our voting next month. Our public hearing is prescribed by our charter, didn't line us up to have our hearing before last night's meeting, so tonight it's kind of, I guess, a formality, a housekeeping kind of thing. So this is, it has gone to the ballot, the council has to take no action, but we had to have the public hearing and so we appreciate you stepping to the plate in lieu of Mike Kelly.
Yes. Yes, he's invited me actually to stop by on my way out of town just to speak with him. I did want to just address that the businesses and how important Keno is to the businesses that offer. Recently, legislation was introduced, it was not successful, to, the current sales commission for Keno, they get eight cents on the dollar for each Keno ticket sold. And legislation was introduced to actually decrease that commission. And I had the, I was the one that was selected to go and speak on behalf of the lottery and on behalf of our partners that sell Keno. And this lovely woman from a restaurant called The Mug in Center Harbor, she spoke about how difficult it would be from going from an 8% sales commission and dropping it to 5%. And she explained that in the business that she is in, that over the past few years, her costs have been rising. So in order to kind of keep ahead of those costs, it was wonderful to be able to have Keno come on board and to, you know, help offset those costs, not only through the sales commission, but Keno actually brings people into her business. And once they are into her business, they also stay a little longer. They might buy another beverage, they might buy additional appetizers, have dinner, all of which the Keno retailers have told us have really increased their food and beverage sales up to 10%. So regardless as to whether or not you believe that Keno should support education in the state of New Hampshire, it is doing something very good for businesses and it can do something very good for businesses here in Merrimack. It was, I was very proud of that woman and how she spoke and how I was able to see the other side and to see what the game of Keno has done on behalf of businesses. So again, it is important. We did ask the UNH Survey Center to do a survey on behalf of us, to speak to Keno retailers and to ask them what it has done. And they did report that people are coming in, they're seeing new faces come through the door. So instead of leaving the town of Merrimack to go out to dinner and play Keno, perhaps they will stay here and play. They're seeing again new faces, their current customers stay a little longer. Most of the Keno locations, three-quarters of them, said that they are going to re-up with us. That means that they're going to sign on for another year and pay for their Keno license. They believe it's that important to their business. But other than that, I appreciate the time that you've given me and I hope it's successful here in Merrimack.
Thank you very much, Maura.
Okay? Thank you.
I guess I'm not surprised that this legislation that you're speaking of, Tommy, I shouldn't be surprised. What surprises me is that it was barely a year when they did it, because I think they did that to the lottery. I think they changed the monies that went into education years ago and they're just greedy, greedy people who can't help themselves, so, so anyhow, now I'm done.
Absolutely. We do believe that there's a lot of growth still left for Keno, many locations that can put it on sale. More locations, of course, mean greater sales, greater sales, of course, means more net profit that can be earmarked for education.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you.
Did you want to speak to them?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Sure.
How much is a license for Keno?
$500 a year.
Okay, thank you.
Or a machine?
No, just per establishment.
And do they have to purchase machines from you or?
No, we provide those at no cost.
As many as they want?
It is determined by their sales. So the larger locations do have more than one machine that will sell Keno. Along with that come monitors that are placed on the walls that show the electronic drawings that take place every five minutes. We also support the locations with a variety of advertising pieces, signs, and as you may have heard on TV and radio, some of the commercials are playing right now to support the game of Keno. So that's all at no cost to these establishments. They do pay the $500 annual license fee.
Yeah, actually, if there's nobody further who would like to address the council, I'll close the public hearing at 7:49. And thanks again.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it. I think we will try and tackle the next public hearing.
I think so.
The, who was gonna be here to present? Yes, Robert Price was to be here and he had to step away, so, but I think the, this is a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of up to $4,437 of the grant from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for milfoil control by a diver-assisted suction harvesting. The town would have a matching share of $13,313 that is, the town's being asked to, that that be expended from the milfoil capital reserve fund. The total of the, of the cost of this DASH would be $17,750. So I'll open the public hearing at 7:50. And do you, if you wanted to say anything further on that little bit right there?
Sure, a little bit. The, this is something that we see every year and have for quite a few years. The milfoil program, treatment program is, can be actually treatment with chemicals or a combination of treatment with chemicals and the harvesting, the, what is it called again? Dash harvesting, which stands for?
Diver-assisted suction harvesting.
Diver-assisted suction, yes. So in order to keep up with it, unfortunately, once you have milfoil, it's with you forever, so you really have to keep up with it. And I think that we ran into some problems several years ago when we missed a few years and things became a real issue. So as you can see, the local cost is, the percentages are going down as they do of the state's portion. And the local cost is $13,313 and we do have enough money in our milfoil trust to pay our portion.
And it is covering, I don't think we mentioned, it's covering portions of both Horseshoe Pond and Natta Cook Lake.
Natta Cook Lake, yes.
If anybody would like to speak to this item, please feel free to step to the mic. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:52. The pleasure of the council.
Mr. Chairman, I move the town council vote to accept and authorize the expenditure of up to $17,750 for the milfoil treatment program at Horseshoe Pond and Natta Cook Lake, of which $4,437 is from a grant from NHDES for milfoil control via DASH. And the town's portion is $13,313 to be funded from the milfoil expendable capital reserve fund. And furthermore, the town council authorized the town manager or her designee to execute any and all documents which may be necessary.
Second.
Motion by Council Cannon, second by Councilor Haley. Would you like to speak to your motion?
This, it's almost become a, well, as Eileen said, it's an annual thing to deal with it. Milfoil is not going away. It's an invasive species. That means any little tiny bit that's left behind grows exponentially throughout the year. And again, as Eileen said, when we didn't keep up with it on an annual basis, it got away from us. We had to go to chemical treatment and chemical treatment in the water is always seems to me to be a very invasive measure. So I would rather, we try to keep up with it as best we can, do the diver-assisted suction harvesting.
suction harvesting, because it doesn't require any chemicals at that point. If we can stay up above it, we're in better shape.
Agreed. Barbara?
Agreed. And I'd just like to remind everyone watching that whether you're a boater or a fisherman, please make sure that you check your anchors, your propellers, your trailers, even your fishing gear, your, on your lines, to make sure that when you're done, your items are clean and that you're not taking vegetation, you know, to some other lake or pond, that it doesn't have a problem currently. Because, as Councilor Koenig said, once this gets going, it is very invasive. Thank you.
I actually witnessed it firsthand at Keuga Lake, one of the Finger Lakes in western New York, and the water was crystal clear, but you couldn't go in the water because it was just so full of the milfoil. It was amazing to me, but, so, I changed my tune a little bit because I used to fight this off a little bit, and I don't do that anymore.
It, it looks like a fern, right, that grows from the, from the soil up?
Yep. And you could see where, the stuff I saw, there were catfish nesting down at the bottom, and you could see right to the crystal clear bottom, but if you walk, it would just be disgusting, I wouldn't even go near the water. Yep. So, and we, and our lakes are assets for our community. I mean, the people who live there have, of course, the enjoyment of it directly, but if those lakes and ponds are impacted, the values can have a negative impact, and that will affect our receipts. And looking at it that way, that's probably not the best way to look at it, I suppose, but Nancy?
I think it also has to be repeated that the residents of Natick, and I think somewhat Horseshoe Pond, but especially Natick, have been very active in the maintaining of that as well. They have been for a long time, and I've always been feeling as if it's our responsibility to add on to what the responsibility they're taking care of as well. So, between the two of us, I think, we're controlling it as much as we can.
Yep. I know they go out marking locations.
I compliment them, that's right, they work hand in hand.
Yeah. Alrighty. Nothing further? I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Okay. Legislative updates from our state representatives? Hi, Nancy. Oh. I did. I can't remember.
He did, yeah.
Thank you, though, because you know me well enough to know I could easily forget. Yep. Yeah, no. How are you, Nancy?
Good, how are you?
I'm well.
Thank you. I noticed that last week Kathy and Wendy, I think, gave you a much more broad view of a lot of bills. I'm just going to talk about just a few of the ones that affect here. So, I'll start with those.
Nancy, if you, Tom reminded me you should probably say who you are and announce yourself.
I'm Nancy Murphy.
Thank you very much.
Represented as for Merrimack. So, thank you for having me and giving me the time tonight. I'll talk about a couple of bills. One of the bills that I think everybody's aware of, because it's been on the news, was Senate Bill 300, which was based on, related to removing the tolls at Exit 11. Myself and Wendy and Representative Barry all testified on Tuesday before the Finance Committee, asking that the, the tolls be removed. Actually, I think it made it to the news and it's in the, in the paper. We, Department of Transportation objected and opposed our request, said that they will lose about $5 million a year, and that Merrimack had agreed and still had outstanding debt that would not be paid off for a number of years. I think four, it was to 2024. So, that was their objection, where that stands, and, you know, I mean, I know there's a lot of support for it in the House, but as, you know, we'll see. Sure.
Okay, so, as this was coming up, I tried to unlock the mysteries of the exits, the tolls and the revenues versus the expenditures, when the bonds were due, and I had a very, very hard time trying to get any information. There's no reason why they wouldn't have it. Some of the legis, you know, I mean, when, when Senator Daniels was here, he had all the numbers. I couldn't even get the debt schedules. They said they're very old. Well, you make payments, right? So, I asked for all this information, and they, they said, "Well, we'll need to speak to our, the finance person in DOT in order to release that information." I go, "It's public information, so I guess I'll have to do a 91A request." But, one of the things, the council, several years ago, maybe six years ago, hired someone to do a very extensive report that consolidated, consolidated every effort to do the tolls from the beginning to, to date, and to that date. And we found the mystery letter that said that Merrimack, allegedly said that Merrimack wanted to pay the tolls in order to, in order to get the tolls. And it was a very simple statement written by the town manager at the time, and he said that we understand that this may be the way to pay for the debt on the tolls. So, just a little bit further, I believe the, I can't remember which one went in first, but one of the tolls went in, in 1989, and the other one?
Eleven. Eleven and that ten. Eleven and ten, because they took out, made?
Nineteen eighty-nine, and the other one was a little bit later than that, like, like...
Sorry.
No, but as we, as we discussed, it used to be eight, right? And then they, they modified it to this new?
But the site at Exit 11 has been there since the 60s.
Right. But my, my point really was, is the money that they're talking about and the debt they're talking about relates to that change that occurred. So, if you do a 30-year bond and the, the project opened in 1989?
It's done.
Let's do the math. One. And the other one, I believe, was taken out in 1991. So, in 2021, that would be done. So, I don't know what all this, these things are. There's a lot of, there, there are some very, being from a finance background, there are very simple ways to do that and to help somebody and educate them on the ins and outs of that. I asked the question of this person in the finance office. I had said, it had been mentioned to us that when we got the money, when, when the state counted on the revenue for that, regardless of whether it was a loser in a net fashion, they counted on that to be able to leverage more federal funds for the whole highway system. And, so, I asked this person that, and he said, "That's not so." But he wouldn't write it. So, I, it's really not my place to do this, but it's just very frustrating to me that this continues to go on, that you can't get the proper information. I asked the person, "Can you please give me the information like I would give to you and explain it to you?" And he said, "I can give you pieces and parts that you ask for."
So, how is it that they can determine that the bond won't be paid till 2024?
I asked them. I asked them, "And how can it be paid in 2024 when it actually opened in nine, in eighty-nine and ninety-one? If it opened, it means maybe at least a year before they issued the debt."
And I'm not a financial person, and this wasn't my bill, but I knew it was important. I went in, we didn't actually have House business on Tuesday, it was just the Senate. And that was my understanding. As a matter of fact, I recounted stories of back in the 80s when we, when we were so distraught that we put pennies in the tolls back in the day. And I said, "We have paid and paid and paid, and we are subsidizing the entire state, Merrimack is. We can't go to work, we can't leave town, we can't get in or out without paying a toll." And I said, "You know, people from out of state come here and take advantage of our lack of sales tax, and we pay for them to come here." Anyway, I was told? Yep, sure.
So, so, anyway, so I asked the question of what can be done as far as, you know, how, they leverage the funds, do they do the work on the turnpike system? And they said, "No, the federal funds cannot be spent on the turnpike system." So, you know, I mean, they leverage it from the point of view of saying that it's, it's a source of revenue, and because the exits are coming onto secondary roads that aren't the turnpike, and they're going, and not only that, but going onto the highways, that they're able to, by kind of a smoke and mirrors kind of thing, able to leverage that. And I also asked him, "Are we breaking, if, if that went away, if that revenue went away, would we be, would we be hitting a threshold that changed the percentage of the state, would the state happen?" And he said, "No." So, you can use your information in whatever fashion that you want, but there is the truth. There are facts that if we could get, would be really nice.
So, specifically, what can I ask that I can, I just want to be clear what I'm asking for?
You and I will talk.
Okay.
And I will sit down and talk about it, and I'll tell you.
Okay. All right. But, point being, Merrimack was represented, we tried, and I actually was confused because they talked about a bond, and I thought they were saying 1999, and I thought it was earlier. So, I'm not sure what's happening to these bonds, whether they're renegotiating and we're going every couple of years, and that's why our start date, when we were saying 30 years ago. So, I was confused about that, but not having the background in all the financial piece, I couldn't speak to that, just about the fact that it's been long, a long time. So, okay, we'll talk about that one. Anyway, that was Senate Bill 300. There was a House Bill 736, it was a bill I sponsored, and Kathy Stack, Wendy Thomas were cosponsors, sponsors of a number of senators and other representatives. It was establishing a commission to look at the environmental impacts of, let me just grab which one this was, I have a couple of them, commissioned to study environmentally triggered chronic disease. And it's, it's a pretty hefty commission, there's about 20 people from different, I mean, BU School of Medicine, Dartmouth, environmental scientists, DHHS, DES, and a whole group of people. And I, I thought that was important because of our ranking, one that I don't think we should be proud of in the state of New Hampshire, is number one for pediatric cancer, breast cancer, esophageal cancer, and bladder cancer. So, I think that certainly needed to be looked at, and, you know, we're separate, we have arsenic and a number of other things besides PFAS. But, anyway, the, that went to committee, and Department of Health and Human Services sent their Director of Legislative Services, John Williams, to discuss with me an amendment that he wanted to put on it, which I was not particularly fond of. And it was an amendment that would allow Department of Health and Human Services to participate, which they've guaranteed, and I, I know absolutely, they're, they're interested in their, their role and intention, and they want to do the work. But the concern is if they run out of resources, that, that, that they wanted sort of a line in the, the commission that would say, should they run out of resources, basically, I started as an opt-in, opt-out, and I said, "That's what concerns me." I said, "Having worked at DHHS, I recognize there's a shortage of staff and, and resources. However, I also recognize that there are ways to reallocate resources, and that sometimes when you realize something has to happen, people figure out how to make it happen." And so, I, anyway, the amendment's on there, but the bill passed full committee, bipartisan support, no objections, and it went to the House floor today and passed with consent. We didn't, and was it, so that's a good thing, that's one of the bills. The other bill that I'm also prime sponsor for, and Kathy Stack and Wendy Thomas are also cosponsors, and is a bill even more specific to Merrimack, and it's got a long title, but it's one that I'm really, I'm really hoping is going to go someplace. It's another commission to investigate and analyze the environmental and public health impacts relating to releases of perfluorinated chemicals in the air, soil, and groundwater in Merrimack, Bedford, and Litchfield. I also have a representative from Bedford that's also a cosponsor. I introduced that to the committee, that was to Resources a week ago. DHHS came in as well, wanted the same amendment on for the same reasons, we had the same discussion. And, but that exact as well, and full support, bipartisan support, all 20 people agreed, and so that will go to the consent calendar too, so I don't expect any opposition in the House. What had happened early on with the bills that I put in, there was a question of whether I had signed off on the original bills, which I did, and so, they, they didn't think I did, so I had to go to rulemaking, and they said, "Okay, yes, you did." So, my bills went in late, in the, because I was so panicked about this Merrimack bill, I asked Tom Sherman, Senator Tom, Dr. Tom Sherman from the Seacoast, I said, "I really need these bills to go in, so can you put my bills in, and just in case mine don't make it through?" And he did. So, essentially, we have two of the same bills in a couple of places, not the Merrimack-Bedford one, we're, we're good on that. The other one, Tom, and I'm a cosponsor on, on Tom's bill, it's Senate Bill 85, and that went to, we had a hearing on that on Tuesday as well, in the Senate. It's essentially, it's my bill, not quite a third, it's missing a few pieces, but DHHS came as well to that one, and Dr. Sherman did his best to sort of, he agreed that he was concerned, as I was, about that clause, but that has been amended too. So, I don't know when it goes to the House, whose bill is going to go through. I'm hoping it's mine, because it's, 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 I think it's more comprehensive, I think he would agree, but what may happen is he may take my stuff and put it on his bill. It doesn't matter, it just needs to happen, that's really the, the, the issue. So, those are two really good things, I think, to look at. I explained it when committees in the House were asking, "Why do we need, you know, so many people, and why do, whatever?" Explained that other legislators are now, because we're having a lot of opportunity to speak to them, they're recognizing, you know, Merrimack, Nashville used to think they're safe, Pana Check now has it. So, I said, "Coming to your community, you know, this is just, just wait." And so, people are getting it, there's a, you know, the, there's a lot of interest and there's a lot of support there. So, I think, I think we'll find that, we'll find that. Of course, when we start talking money, fortunately, none of my bills had fiscal notes on, which really helped. So, anyway, that, those are those two. There's another bill that unfortunately, I was a cosponsor on, that I thought was a really great bill, and it would have been a wonderful bill for Merrimack, and it was a, it was CAC R8. It was a constitutional amendment that would have specifically would just addressed health. It was relative to the right of local communities to govern, and it would have provided that the people of the state may enact local laws that protect health. So, it would have allowed Merrimack to set their own ordinances around things for, just only related to health. It did not pass, we went to, we went to committee the other day, and it, it didn't pass, which is, which is unfortunate, because I think that would have been a great avenue for us as well, to give us one more place to go when we say there are no regulations, there are no laws. So, I feel like it's a missed opportunity, but we tried. The only other, a couple of other things, I think you mentioned the PFAS fear. One of the things that I want to mention is, I, as Councilor Boyd said, I was on the planning board, and I remain on the planning board for this, one of the, the issues and things that I noted when we were looking at what, what we thought might have been missing from the list of, you know, advocacy groups, and we have a, it's, it's going to be quite a comprehensive assortment of vendors, so to speak. I had asked, Jonathan Lee was there, and I asked that, I said, "Given that Merrimack, we're, you know, we're into this pretty deep now, and there are a lot of people questioned, have questions about filtration." And I said, you know, we spoke about the Warren articles and things, but in the meantime, there are a lot of people that are looking at private home filtration and are confused, and I see, I see a lot on social media about people popping in and offering all kinds of wonderful things, and some may be wonderful, some may not be. And I said, "I think that the public," I had asked that you would come prepared to provide the public with some solid, I know you can't recommend specific companies or things, but please tell people what they need, so that when they're looking at all these options out there, they're at least making, I said, "We're paying enough, this is costing our town, people that don't have this money enough." So, to, to add further insult to injury by buying something that, you know, is, is the wrong... to injury by buying something that, you know, is, is the wrong stuff, is, was just wrong. So, they, they've told me DES will be there, and they will provide that piece. So, that's one, another thing. Two other things is, I know that it's, it's, in social media, and I think it's been in the paper too, presidential candidate Kirsten Gillibrand will be here tomorrow, I don't know if anybody's mentioned that, she'll be at a PFAS roundtable around 1:50, 2 o'clock tomorrow here, the public's invited, and that's to discuss our water contamination and water issues. And the only other, last thing I'd mentioned is that, I was invited to breakfast this morning with the governor, my, I'm on the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee, it was just our whole group, it wasn't a personal invitation, but I took that advantage to speak to him about our water and express my concern about the MCLs, the, that I personally do not feel are protective. I thought that, I suggested to him that, you know, we, these, these, these chemicals have never had to be proven safe, as you would a drug or a food, and that we should be looking at a precautionary principle based on public health, and what is going on in our state in terms of our, our ranking, in terms of, you know, those, those cancers. And it was very interesting, and I was, I was surprised by his response, I said, you know, we might like to sit down and get together with a, a group of people that are really invested in this, which he was open to, that wasn't the issue. But, you know, I said, we should be looking at other states that have, are, you know, have much more protective MCLs, and I, and I said, like Vermont? And his response was, well, I'm, all four, you know, more protective MCLs, based on science. And I said, well, I said, that was based on science? And he said, no, it wasn't. And I said, well, what was it based on? And he said, politics. I talked to the governor, and the MCLs in Vermont are based on politics. And I was surprised by that, and I said, I'm not sure that I agree with you, but I think that may be a, a conversation down the road, but I, I was taken aback that that was, he was very firm and very, very sure that, he had, he has had this discussion with the governor of Vermont, and it was purely political, and he said, and those will never go lower, now that they've been set. And I said, well, like, the same thing would be happening here. And he said, well, just because other states do that, doesn't mean we do. And I said, but sometimes we can learn from other states, as we do, in other things, and, and benefit from, I said, New Jersey, New Jersey. I said, we have a beautiful state here, and I, you know, I said, we could be learning from New Jersey. So, more discussion, certainly, but I was, I was surprised by that, but conversation today. So, I think that's, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Nancy.
That's the other side?
No.
Just a comment to Vermont. There's supposedly a report, report has never seen the light of day regarding the, how Vermont got down to 20 parts per trillion. If you try Googling any, any type of a, of a scientific report as it relates to Vermont, how they arrive on 20, you cannot find it. So, that is probably, again, not speaking for the governor, but understanding his mindset of why he said what he said. And that was talked about last year, when this, when we were talking about MCLs, that Vermont didn't, did not have, set a criteria that they were relying on to, to arrive at that particular number. Conversely, it's like you said, New Jersey, Maine, a lot of reports have been done in those particular states that have allowed them to arrive at the numbers that they did. Minnesota, again, another state, did, did a much more comprehensive report that allowed them to arrive at the number that they arrived at. But as far as Vermont having a report, I've never, I've never seen one out of Vermont.
You've seen no science that, that they've used in Vermont?
I'm sorry?
You haven't seen any, any science?
No, just outside of the reporting as it relates to Bennington, I mean, that's probably the only thing that I've seen, but as far as something directly from the state of Vermont, I've not seen anything.
Yeah, oh, no, I, I didn't mean it was, it was Vermont-based, but they based their numbers on science data from other places.
Correct.
That's what, that's what I was talking about.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Town manager report, Eileen, do you have anything this evening?
I wanted to give you an update on the success of the annual winter carnival. It was held on, at Washtenaw Park on Saturday, February 23rd. We had 29 different businesses and community organizations join us at the event by providing a wide variety of games, crafts, and other outdoor activities. We're thrilled to have perfect weather this year for change, and actually had snow on the ground for the event for the first time in five years. We are estimating that we had approximately 1,000 attendees at this year's event. Special thanks to the Public Works Department for getting the park roads plowed and sanded for the event, as well as a thank you to the Merrimack Police Department volunteers for handling parking and traffic. I just think it's important to, I, I think, I'm always surprised when I hear, get reports from Matt on the events that he puts together and how many people attend, it's always really surprising to me. The Bedford Road Bridge Replacement Project is ready to enter the construction phase. The contract for the project near Pearson Road has been awarded to E.D. Swett of Concord, New Hampshire. Construction is expected to begin in early April, with the contractor removing the old bypassed concrete bridge and installing a temporary detour. Traffic will then run through the detour via an alternate, alternating one-way traffic controlled by temporary traffic signals. The existing bridge will be replaced once the traffic is on the detour road. We expect traffic to be on the new bridge by the end of 2019. Final work on the project, including the removal of detour, the detour road, will occur in the spring of 2020. The contractor will be installing temporary utility poles for the traffic signals next week. The project is funded through state, the State Aid Bridge Program, which allows the town to be reimbursed for 80% of the cost. And the Public Works Director gave a phone number in case somebody wants to get more specific details on this, his number is 424-5137, Kyle Fox.
What did the price come in at?
Excuse me?
The price of the project?
Oh.
I'm just curious, I can find out later.
The bridge, the bridge bid was opened, it was about $3.5 million.
Okay.
And then...
That's just for the construction?
That's just for the construction of the bridge, which was lower than the estimate but...
Thank you. Barbara, and then Bill?
Eileen, where is that bridge?
Bedford.
Bedford, beyond Wire Road.
Bedford Road, the contract for the project near Pearson Road.
Yeah, Wheatbury Schools.
Yep. And are they going to let the public know to expect traffic issues?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, yes.
Seeing how we won't be able to get to the dump anymore up there?
April falls.
You know, again, again, to, to Finley and Nancy's point, we've been able to capitalize on these roads because of our capital reserve funds, on the bridges. Because many of the communities for a number of years were, had to, had to basically say, sorry, we, we can't come up with the money that quickly, but we have the ability to use the funds, do the design, and it's ready to go, as soon as somebody's got some cash, we go grab it. And it's 80/20, which again, is wonderful.
That's it, Eileen? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eileen, could you please ask Kyle to reach out to the towns of Amherst, Bedford, and Goffstown to make them aware of that, because I know that's a major cut, pass through to get to the turnpike.
At the beginning, a little bit more.
Correct.
Especially since I took the tolls off the twelve.
That's true. All righty. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eileen.
There's no consent agenda, and no old business. First item under new business, the council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation from Santander Bank in the amount of $500 to the Parks and Recreation Department's annual Easter egg hunt pursuant to RSA 31:95B in Charter Article 8, Section 15. I don't know if anybody would speak to anything, it's, this is not the first time that they've done this, Santander Bank is one of those good, you know, organizations.
Do they get a plaque? Have they in the past?
I think they have, I'll have to check, but...
You know what I'm saying?
Oh, they have not?
Santander has not.
They have not did.
I would like to make a motion that they, especially their yearly, they should be receiving one of those plaques that provide, you know...
Yep. Okay. I'll, I'll provide you a, I'll provide you a list of the donations that we've received over the past...
That would be nice.
Several years. Few years.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, move approval?
Second.
Motion by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Thornton, because he's a short timer, and with usual thanks.
Are you calling me an old timer?
Long timer.
Oh, a long timer. That's better.
But, any further discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 600. Next, item number two under new business, the town council to discuss the meals and rooms tax distribution and the possibility presented a request to the Merrimack delegation. Eileen?
Don't hit me. So, anyway, I, what I want to say is, this is, again, another example of the state providing for, giving room money to communities for rooms and meals taxes. There was a formula that was established, it's diminished, and diminished, and diminished, and then put on hold. And I'm going to let Paul talk about it, because he did the research. The other thing that I would like to say is, this is an example of what we use the New Hampshire Municipal Association for, they had all this information that we could put together, as well as the numbers that would be received from each community. So, Paul, thank you, good job.
So, when Rooms and Meals was passed way back in 1967, it was supposed to be 60% going to the state and 40% going to the municipalities. My predecessor, Bob Levan, actually had a meeting with the current governor's father, who was in office one time, about when he had to put a furlough, so to speak, on it. I remember Bob Levan coming to me and telling me about the story where he went to the governor's office to speak about this, to put a little furlough on it, and it was guaranteed that it would be back up to 60, to 60/40. Well, over the years, they have stopped funding it at 60/40. Right now, it's, in 2001, it was 82% state, 18% town. In 2010, it was 71% state, 29% town. It was suspended in fiscal years 2010, '14, '16, '18, and '19, while the revenue was still coming in, which was going directly to the state at current levels. Currently, we are at, in 2019, 21%, 79% to the state. There's the catch-up provision for $5 million of, of excess, so if the state's room and meals goes up by $5 million, the first $5 million is supposed to be come back to communities, the rest stays with the state. That was the catch-up provision, that has been suspended as well, and we are not. Right now, if they would enact that $5 million catch-up, just for this fiscal year, I believe we would receive $95,000 extra in revenue, or about, it kept, quite still about three cents on our tax rate. And this is not, just not an issue with this town of Merrimack, it's an issue with every community in the state.
Right.
Because they would all receive additional money. Over the years.
Yep.
The state.
That never works well.
And the very last page of the memo that I gave you, it's kind of hard to read, I understand that, but there's a lot of data, and that basically talks about all the state revenue sharing that was given to the communities, and some of it's been decreased, as you'll see over the years, and some of it's been stopped altogether. So, it's been formed to offset the taxes in the communities, communities that now have to bear that burden, to either collect more revenue somehow, or raise taxes.
So, Paul, question for you. Is this only based on towns and cities that actually have hotels?
Nope.
So, it's across the board, whether you have whatever, you get a cut of it?
Correct.
I believe it's based on population.
Yes. It's, yes, population and, there's a formula, population and assess values. But every community in the state is part of this program.
I guess my question is, it says here, request to the Merrimack delegation, are you proposing that we elicit the assistance from the delegation?
We can. I don't know if Nancy knows when they will be taking up the governor's budget, and if, at that time, they can make changes, like they have in the past, to include this as, as part of the revenue or not.
Is there a method by which we can request all of the Merrimack delegation to become aware of this?
I think, I think the real point of this would be to send a letter, like we typically do, to the governor through the delegation on behalf of the town.
Got you.
And also include it collectively with a group of New Hampshire Municipal Association towns and cities that will be lobbying for this as well. The New Hampshire Municipal Association is lobbying hard for this.
Then we, then we should do that, I, I'm not sure. Go ahead.
What Eileen said so moved.
So, send a letter of support and explanation to Municipal Association, Town of Merrimack reps, the state senator...
Yes.
To the governor's office. And could we ask that, who should write it?
One.
Okay. And, for the town of, the council, on behalf. Do you need anything, anything more than that?
Motion by Barbara, second by Tom.
The motion speaks for itself.
Yes, perfect. All right, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 600.
It's got a lot of good data in here. Remember to keep that when we're talking about evaluating municipal, that's one of those things we have to remember.
Yeah. All righty. Thank you, Eileen Paul. Next item on the agenda under new business is the town council to consider appointing a new auditing firm in accordance with Charter Article 8, Section 16, which has to be done every five years.
Five years. We, believe it or not, it's been five years since Plazek and Sanders have been the town, Sanderson has been the town auditors. We are going out, we went out to bid in the Finance Department, we received three bids. One bid was from Plazek and Sanderson, they wanted to change partners. So, I went out and reached out to the town's attorneys and tried to get a legal opinion so that we can include it in our charter for future reference, if I'm not here or anybody else in future years. Basically, the attorney said that the spirit of the charter was to change companies, to get a fresh set of eyes on the books. They felt that if we change partners, we're not really getting a fresh set of eyes in the true sense of the term "eyes," meaning that the partner's always there, and they could always go to that partner and ask him questions, why'd you do it this way, why'd you do it that way?
Right.
Whereas, with the new auditor, they have to audit and look at things in a different light. Also reached out to Tom Mahon, the charter chairman?
The charter chief.
The charter chief chairman? And we, we asked him if he could recall what was the spirit of the charter commission on this article, and the spirit in his eyes was to change firms every five years.
And I agree.
So, what happened is, since, even though they were the little bid, I contacted the partner who I've been dealing with for the last five years and told them, our charter states this, they were okay with it, they were very, very genuine, they said, if things don't work out, give us a call.
Good.
So, then we went to our next two lower bids, and over a three-year period, they were identical, at the total for those three years was $99,000 and $99,000. However, Graham &amp; Graham was cheaper in the first two years. And the way I was looking at it is that if we do not like the services of Graham &amp; Graham in those first two years, we can get rid of them, we would save the town money, versus going with Lanton &amp; Heath, who we already have a relationship with, plus... versus going with Lanton and Heath, who we already have a relationship with, plus, we used them five, six years ago, prior, the prior five years. So, it's my recommendation that we move with Graham and Graham firm to do the audit, at least for next fiscal year.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Anybody have any questions or thoughts? See none?
Mr. Plumb would like to make a motion.
That's a bad section down there.
Tonight, it's really bad.
You have to make effort, it's got to be ending soon.
So, Paul, what's my motion? I'm going to motion for you to move forward with Graham and Graham as our audit engagement. That's perfect.
Second.
Motion by Tom Thornton, seconded by Barbara. Tom, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, Finley, I think the motion speaks for itself.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? See none? I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 600.
Thank you. It was good for you to do that.
Minutes of February 28. Mr. Chairman, I move the February 28, 2019 town council meeting minutes, the following changes. Page three, line four, to be consistent, where officer has been capitalized, officer should be capitalized. Page 10, line 46, it's not Loop Road, it is Loop Road, L O O P. That's all I had. Barbara?
I have correction on page five, line 33, Vice Chairman Rothaus, I think it should be...
Unless you switch.
Yeah. So, it should be...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wasn't even here.
You were in Florida, we know, so...
And I got punished for that, too. I got the flu, came home, I was glodding to all of you, the temperatures that I was enduring while you froze.
You were having fun.
Yeah, I got the flu for six days, it was brutal. Man-sick, you know.
And shared.
And shared. All right, is there anything further on the minutes? On a motion by Counselor Boyd, seconded, I believe, by Nancy, yes. Any, no further discussion on it? I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, I'll be abstaining, so, you'll be abstaining as well, Tom. So, 402, Tom Thornton and Finley Rothaus in the abstention. Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council?
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy Friday. I'm not Irish. Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Motion by Tom Thornton to adjourn, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 600. Thank you, everybody.